Good morning. We're going to go call the August 30th, 2023 San Diego County Board of Supervisors Land Use Meeting, a public control district meeting to order. As a reminder, according to the board rules and procedures, audience members should not whistle, clap, stomp feet, or anything that disrupts proceedings. Clerk, can you please call the role?
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. Before I call the role, I'd like to note for the record that Vice Chair Lawson Reamer has requested to participate via teleconference due to an emergency circumstance. As such, if approved, all votes will be handled by a roll call vote. With that, I will now call the role. Supervisor Anderson?
Here.
Supervisor Desmond?
Here.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer?
Here.
Chairwoman Vargas?
Vargas here. All right. Our first item on the agenda is a request for more participation from Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. Is there a motion to approve the request for more participation from Vice Chair Lawson Reamer?
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. Yes. The first item will be for the board to consider a request by Vice Chair Lawson Reamer to participate remotely. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer will state the emergency circumstance for the board's consideration, state whether anyone over the age of 18 is in the room with the supervisor as well as their relationship to the supervisor. Then the board will consider a motion, second, and vote.
I am recovering from COVID, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Okay. With that, I'm happy to make a motion.
Second.
All right. So there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
And Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes with all supervisors who are present in the chamber voting aye.
Okay. We will now hear the report of actions taken yesterday in closed session. County Council, is there anything to report?
Yes. Good morning. The Board of Supervisors met in closed session on August 29th, 2023, from 2:40 PM to 3:02 PM. The Board took the following reportable action. On Item 24A, Briggs Law Corporation versus County of San Diego, with three members of the Board voting aye and Supervisor Lawson Reamer absent, the Board waived the attorney-client privilege for all fee agreements, engagement letters, billing documents, and communications between Briggs Law Corporation and the former Julian Quyamaca Fire Protection District with regard to Briggs Law Corporation's services and/or representation of the former Julian Quyamaca Fire Protection District from January 1st, 2019 through September 13th, 2021. The waiver includes anyone acting or purporting to act on behalf of Briggs Law Corporation and the former Julian Quyamaca Fire Protection District. End of report.
Thank you. We will now proceed with non-agenda public communications. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters within the Board's jurisdiction, but not an item on today's agenda. The only action that the Board may take is a referral to the chief administrative officer. And reminder that according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are not English-speaking and need any participation assistance will get twice the allotted time for their comments, which is four minutes. To better facilitate the meeting, we will have five speakers in person, five speakers via phone, and the rest of the non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's meeting. Clerk, can you call for the speakers?
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have 15 total requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, six in person, and nine individuals requesting to speak by phone. For those that have requested to speak via phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with our in-person speakers. As your name is called, if you could please come forward and stand against the east wall under the murals and tell it is your turn to speak. You'll then have two minutes to address the Board, and I'd like to invite forward the following individuals: Michael, Summer Light, Robert Gurman, Anthony, and Truth. Again, you'll have two minutes to address the Board, and if you could please state your name before beginning your comments. You may come forward in any order.
Your name is Shawn Mendes?
You may come forward in any order.
All right. This is Truth, the tough act to follow. Yesterday, NCTD's executive director, Matthew Tucker, who just like Hassan suddenly announced retirement, got a proclamation. This was the guy who was accused of harassment and bullying of female employees, yet kept getting salary increases to the point that he makes $333,000 a year with bonuses up to $20,000. Tucker did such a great job with NCTD that Justice James McIntyre said, quote, "If you need improvement in this many categories, you must be, not even be, a medium-rate organization," end quote. Then, Nora, at the end of yesterday's meeting, you thanked people for providing public comment without profanity, bullying, or harassment. Two parts I disagreed with is, one, when you said "democracy." I don't want to live under tyranny of the majority. And, two, when you said you'll continue to encourage people to come. I haven't seen that yet. It's just as Brando has said, "People don't even know that this board exists and votes on items that directly affect their lives." And how can anyone feel encouraged when their voices go unrepresented, such as yesterday with about 150 people against Item 23, and everybody but Jim still voted it through? Or when speakers are interrupted before they can even make a single point into this microphone. It's just like Monique said yesterday. It's not enough to say you care. It's the action that follows. But Nora, let me be candid about what I do agree with. When you said we can agree to disagree, personally, I separate this business and city business from the people in the seats. So that's why I could talk to any reps before, after, outside a meeting that I disagree with on one or many things, and there's no issue. As long as there's mutual respect, we're good. And to use hypocritical Shawn A. Rivera's line, remember, everyone who speaks is a human being too. But if there's only consideration coming from one side, it's an abusive relationship that should be rejected.
You may begin your comments.
My name is Summer Light. Homeowners are facing the highest fire risk in 25 years due to the poor management of the Department of Public Works of buffer land next to the homes at the San Marcos landfill. Slide 2. County puts flammable straw waddles within 30 feet of homes to catch sliding asphalt from an unnecessary road built improperly. These waddles sprouted six-foot-tall weeds in addition to the straw waddles themselves being flammable. Remove the toxic asphalt, and the straw waddles can be removed. We asked the county to do weed abatement in spring so weeds don't reseed, increasing the volume of fire risk growth. County replies, "We're not doing weed abatement in spring. We're doing it in July." In July, county tells us we're not doing weed abatement in July due to birds nesting. Birds nesting was not taken into consideration when the county graded bulldozed trees and bushes and dumped truckloads of reclaimed asphalt on this buffer wildlife preserve. I have sent a 10-minute slideshow to all the supervisors since it was the Board of Supervisors who voted unanimously to spend the money to have this San Marcos landfill blend in with the surrounding scenery and support native wildlife. Please watch it and help us get this wildlife habitat back on track. Slide 3. Two decades DPW kept homeowners safe with early spring fire clearance as well as successfully preserving the wildlife environment and the beauty for our community and our hikers. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Anthony Buchla. I'm a resident of the Elephant Forest, a volunteer of the Elephant Forest Recreation Reserve Trail Patrol Team, and also a member of the Elephant Forest Harmony Grove Community Emergency Response Team. I would like to focus on the aesthetic value and management of the San Marcos landfill. Almost daily, I hike throughout the adjacent areas of the landfill property, including the Elephant Forest Recreation Reserve, the Keighley Preserve, the Sage Hill Preserve, Rancho La Costa Reserve, and the San Halaio Hills Park, all of which successfully maintain the preservation, wildlife habitat, and unique character of the coastal scrub chaparral. The San Marcos landfill, however, is currently in juxtaposition of this natural open space as defined in the San Halaio Hills Specific Plan Amendment. Recent management decisions in primarily the installation of service roads using the reclaimed asphalt material appear to have interrupted not only the aesthetic appeal but also the wildlife habitat integrity while amplifying the effect of sediment and soil erosion as well as stormwater runoff with negative impact of the Escondido Creek and the Carlsbad watershed network. While the community recognizes that the landfill may present some challenges in effectively maintaining access and maintainability of the overall infrastructure, I would like to appeal to the environmental conscience of Tara Lawson Reamer and the DPW staff to consider the dynamic character of the landfill and the surrounding communities. Further, I would like to see and encourage that all management strategies pertaining to the landfill exercise objective advice and input from these professionals most qualified to assess best practices in preserving its ecological sustainment. A key component to gaining the confidence of the Elephant Forest and San Halaio Hills community is in recognizing the core values of the residents and to enable open-channel dialogue and communication where effective informed management strategies can be employed in the best interest of all community members.
Okay. Come on, straighten up here. Okay. Good morning. Robert Gurman, Lakeside. Hope you're feeling better, Supervisor Reamer. Get well soon. Nobody said that the whole two days that I was here, so I... Pardon me? Oh, you did yesterday? Oh, good for you. I missed it. My slide up? Nope. Doesn't look like it. There you go. Okay. At this Lindbergh tour, we were told because of FAA grant assurances for a public-use airport, Lindbergh had to find a home for flight schools. So San Diego Airport Authority gave them to Montgomery Gibbs and Gillespie Field. Besides, the moderator said, "The schools," and I quote, "They just fly around in circles." I was thinking, gee, thanks. As the meeting progressed, it was obvious Lindbergh didn't have the room for them, and I quote again, "Lindbergh is on a postage-stamp-sized parcel." He said 633 acres. Last Friday, I'm changing the subject. Last Friday, I spoke about a plane flying over our homes in Lakeside. After all the presentation the city and the county did, whether needed or not, why was San Diego County airports left out of the loop, or did they simply not comply? The pattern this 45-year-old plane was flying around Rattlesnake Mountain is the most dangerous pattern at Gillespie Field. Once you leave Alcoa Home Valley, which is protected by the hills and Rattlesnake Mountain, flying conditions change. And then, with a wet runway with all the oil buildup from other aircraft, it could be very dicey. So I am puzzled, and I want an answer. Why was the touch-and-go's necessary? Thank you.
Michael, yesterday during non-agenda public comment, I played an important clip. So if anyone wants to go back and re-watch it, it's very succinct. However, I did not have enough time to give credit to the source. And the source is Dr. David Martin in discussion with Alec Zek. Alec Zek has a podcast called The Way Forward. He does an excellent job, and that was an excellent succinct summary of the counterfeit pandemic. "Clarity is kindness. Clarity is kindness." That's a quote from an author in Houston, Texas, named Brene Brown. "Clarity is kindness." And that's something that has not occurred here. Yesterday, Nora Vargas made comments about bullying and harassing. Well, I would think that lying, triangulating, gaslighting the public is bullying and harassing. Nora Vargas has even said in her role at Sandag, "We divide and conquer to accomplish our goals. We divide and conquer to accomplish our goals." And it's interesting, Nora can't even make eye contact when she's being clearly elucidated here. To use my time-up referencing the comments that were made in the clip yesterday, another thing that's not in alignment with kindness is the bullying and harassment that has occurred with promoting the bioweapon serum injections. If they roll them out again, more people will not comply.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, we will be hearing from the first five callers. The remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we'll begin with our first caller.
Good morning. Chair Vargas and supervisors, my name is Becky Rapp. I'm a parent and a public health educator focusing on the harm marijuana use has on the developing brain of teens and young adults. I wanted to share with you an article published in the LA Times titled Marijuana Addiction Is Real: Those Struggling Often Face Skepticism. The article starts off by describing a situation that is becoming more and more common among teens, and it goes like this. Courtney took her first marijuana puffs at 17. Two decades later, she was raising her toddler son and hiding her dependence from most family members. She would light her pipe more than a dozen times a day, sneaking to the garage of her home while her son napped. As stated in the article, the substance abuse the Mental Health Services Administration estimates at least 16.3 million people in the U.S. had a cannabis use disorder in 2021, putting it behind only alcohol. James Berry, a psychiatric addiction expert at West Virginia University, stated, "It's the second-most common addiction Americans are struggling with, but nobody hears about it." My request this morning is to seek detailed information, the data from our schools, medical experts, and county programs doing prevention regarding the ages and nature of the negative effects our county residents are experiencing from marijuana use. My public health experience indicates that moving forward without this important data and expanding the marijuana industry and its powerful marketing influences in the unincorporated areas of our county is unfortunate and ill-fated timing for county public health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
How about, if you visit American City, you wouldn't find it very pretty. There's two things you must beware. Don't drink the water. Don't breathe the air. San Diego doesn't have a this bad...
Wildlife Preserve. I have sent a 10-minute slideshow to all the supervisors since it was the Board of Supervisors who voted unanimously to spend the money to have this San Marcos landfill blend in with the surrounding scenery and support native wildlife. Please watch it and help us get this wildlife habitat back on track. Two, slide three. Two decades DPW kept homeowners safe with early spring fire clearance as well as successfully preserving the wildlife environment and the beauty for our community and our hikers. Thank you.
My name is Anthony Buchla. I'm a resident of the Elephant Forest, a volunteer of the Elephant Forest Recreation Reserve Trail Patrol Team, and also a member of the Elephant Forest Harmony Grove Community Emergency Response Team. I would like to focus on the aesthetic value and management of the San Marcos landfill. Almost daily, I hike throughout the adjacent areas of the landfill property, including the Elephant Forest Recreation Reserve, the Keighley Preserve, the Sage Hill Preserve, Rancho La Costa Reserve, and the San Leao Hills Park, all of which successfully maintain the preservation, wildlife habitat, and unique character of the coastal scrub chaparral. The San Marcos landfill, however, is currently in juxtaposition of this natural open space as defined in the San Leao Hills Specific Plan Amendment. Recent management decisions in primarily the installation of service roads using the reclaimed asphalt material appear to have interrupted not only the aesthetic appeal but also the wildlife habitat integrity while amplifying the effect of sediment and soil erosion as well as stormwater runoff with negative impact of the Escondido Creek and the Carlsbad watershed network. While the community recognizes that the landfill may present some challenges in effectively maintaining access and maintainability of the overall infrastructure, I would like to appeal to the environmental conscience of Tara Lawson Reamer and the DPW staff to consider the dynamic character of the landfill and the surrounding communities. Further, I would like to see and encourage that all management strategies pertaining to the landfill exercise objective advice and input from these professionals most qualified to assess best practices in preserving its ecological sustainment. A key component to gaining the confidence of the Elephant Forest and San Leao Hills community is in recognizing the core values of the residents and to enable open-channel dialogue and communication where effective informed management strategies can be employed in the best interests of all community members.
Okay, come on, straighten up here. Okay, good morning. Robert Gurman, Lakeside. Hope you're feeling better, Supervisor Reamer. Get well soon. Nobody said that the whole two days that I was here, so I... Pardon me? Oh, you did yesterday? Oh, good for you. I missed it. My slide up? Nope, doesn't look like it. There you go. Okay. At this Lindbergh tour, we were told because of FAA grant assurances for a public-use airport, Lindbergh had to find a home for flight schools. So San Diego Airport Authority gave them to Montgomery Gibbs and Gillespie Field. Besides, the moderator said, "The schools," and I quote, "they just fly around in circles." I was thinking, gee, thanks. As the meeting progressed, it was obvious Lindbergh didn't have the room for them, and I quote again, "Lindbergh is on a postage stamp-sized parcel." He said 633 acres. Last Friday, I'm changing the subject. Last Friday, I spoke about a plane flying over our homes in Lakeside. After all the presentation the city and the county did, whether needed or not, why was San Diego County airports left out of the loop? Or did they simply not comply? The pattern this 45-year-old plane was flying around Rattlesnake Mountain is the most dangerous pattern at Gillespie Field. Once you leave Alcoa Home Valley, which is protected by the hills and Rattlesnake Mountain, flying conditions change. And then, with a wet runway with all the oil buildup from other aircraft, it could be very dicey. So I am puzzled, and I want an answer. Why was the touch-and-goes necessary? Thank you.
Michael, yesterday during non-agenda public comment, I played an important clip. So if anyone wants to go back and re-watch it, it's very succinct. However, I did not have enough time to give credit to the source. And the source is Dr. David Martin in discussion with Alec Zek. Alec Zek has a podcast called The Way Forward. He does an excellent job, and that was an excellent succinct summary of the counterfeit "Clarity is kindness. Clarity is kindness." That's a quote from an author in Houston, Texas named Brené Brown. "Clarity is kindness." And that's something that has not occurred here. Yesterday, Nora Vargas made comments about bullying and harassing. Well, I would think that lying, triangulating, gaslighting the public is bullying and harassing. Nora Vargas has even said in her role at Sandag, "We divide and conquer to accomplish our goals. We divide and conquer to accomplish our goals." And it's interesting, Nora can't even make eye contact when she's being clearly elucidated To use my time-up referencing the comments that were made in the clip yesterday, another thing that's not in alignment with kindness is the bullying and harassment that has occurred with promoting the bioweapon serum injections. If they roll them out again, more people will not comply.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, we will be hearing from the first five callers. The remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we'll begin with our first caller.
Good morning. Chair Vargas and supervisors, my name is Becky Raff. I'm a parent and a public health educator focusing on the harm marijuana use has on the developing brain of teens and young adults. I wanted to share with you an article published in the LA Times titled Marijuana Addiction Is Real: Those Struggling Often Face Skepticism. The article starts off by describing a situation that is becoming more and more common among teens, and it goes like this. Courtney took her first marijuana puff at 17. Two decades later, she was raising her toddler son and hiding her dependence from most family members. She would light her pipe more than a dozen times a day, sneaking to the garage of her home while her son napped. As stated in the article, the substance abuse the Mental Health Services Administration estimates at least 16.3 million people in the U.S. had a cannabis use disorder in 2021, putting it behind only alcohol. James Berry, a psychiatric addiction expert at West Virginia University, stated, "It's the second most common addiction Americans are struggling with, but nobody hears about it. My request this morning is to seek detailed information, the data from our schools, medical experts, and county programs doing prevention regarding the ages and nature of the negative effects our county residents are experiencing from marijuana use. My public health experience indicates that moving forward without this important data and expanding the marijuana industry and its powerful marketing influences in the unincorporated areas of our county is unfortunate and ill-fated timing for county public health and safety." Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Paula Boldt. If you visit American City, you wouldn't find it very pretty. There's two things you must beware: Don't drink the water, don't breathe the air. San Diego doesn't have it this bad, though. The water still tastes like crap because of all the chemicals put in without masking the after odor. But at least you weren't die out of that. The air, however, is pretty good. Don't go near relief showers or behind buses. It's kind of stinky. And I don't know why the mask. Is the air around you really that bad? Nah, we do have bad roads, collapsing breaths, politicians who tried to solicit on affordable housing, and less than half of it is affordable to the low-income people it is trying to protect. And that whole nanny scene with Justin blind yesterday? Disgusting. So, climate change. I think the climate here in San Diego is actually doing what it has and should be doing for the past 100 years: periodic droughts and warm but not too hot weather. So let's not mess it up just because someone who doesn't know San Diego's hard-won wants us to fix our climate change problems. And if they do want to fix their problems, we must look at all of the problem, all aid the greenhouse gases, not just the ones the state measures. And also ozone, the lack of which is even more deadly than ace lasers. And now that you passed it, by the way, when are you doing the carnation thing for District Four? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Not only do they divide and conquer, they buy up homes and land because it ensures your reliance on them. They inflate the economy to tax you further. They keep you sedated with bullshit so that you don't realize what's happening in the world. They don't trust you. When will you get it? Reminder: The system isn't broken. It was built this way. Perfectly flawed. Reminder: A blind belief in authority is the greatest enemy of truth. That's by Einstein. The real conspiracy theorists believe that government cares about them, the media would never mislead them or lie to them, and the pharmaceutical industry that makes billions off of their sickness wants to cure them. Dream on! People believe that they have to be governed because the government programmers programmed it that way. They are master manipulator, masters of manipulation. They know how to work the people. They lube them up really well by using words like equity, sustainability, transparency, safety, right before they stick it to us, hard. It's a painful reality, but the reality is that they're not there to serve us and to protect us. And its citizens. Oh, shit, I need my glasses. It's...oh, fuck. Whatever. Look up UN Agenda 2030, '21, World Economic Forum, United Nations. Everything that this local government is doing is to ensure that everything that this agenda requires will take place. So wake up, people.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
My name is Diane Grace. As a parent and grandparent, I was appalled by a large postcard sent to families in the county illustrating an array of marijuana gummies in, quote, "mouth-watering flavors", end of quote, disposable vapes, and in the lower-left hand corner, marijuana-infused Rice Krispy bars. The flyer announced that no ID is necessary, and the postcard states this comment, quote, "Gave me the mood I was wanting," end of quote. Also, the postcard indicates that packaging will be discreet. As a high school volunteer, I am on the front line of students' mental health. I need to underscore the role that marijuana plays in aggravating mental health. Suicide ideation is the most serious mental health problem facing youth today, with social phobias, depression, and anxiety also sidelined youth. I am gravely concerned about our county's capacity to intervene in declining mental health of our students and in declining student attendance. All of our student districts, all of our school districts are grappling with these two situations, and marijuana and other drug education is lacking. I am appreciative of the county's recent funding to bring Project Alert to a few districts' middle school students. However, it is too slow and too late. Our county needs to hit the pause button on increasing the number of pot shops in our back country until the mental health needs of students are more adequately addressed and the marijuana and other drug education is more expansive in that scope. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our final speaker for the morning.
Good morning. Peggy Walker. My work involves continual review of science-based marijuana research, and it leaves me concerned to find people and policymakers naively unaware of the harms of today's unprecedented potent THC. Victims of this THC deal with harms that range from physical disease to addiction, psychosis, and cognitive impairment to THC poisoning, which is on the rise in young children as THC levels soar. A Colorado physician, Dr. Leslie Peppin, has determined that any amount of THC exceeding 1.7 milligrams per 2.2 pounds of weight is likely to cause children severe prolonged toxicity or poisoning. That tolerance level is lower than expected and should be a threshold for medical management and for marijuana regulations, this doctor said. This is good reason to delay action on marijuana expansion in our county. In a report for the Society for the Study of Addiction, authors Wayne Hall and J.D. Lung of John Wiley &amp; Sons Limited join others in suggesting banning sales of high-potency products, setting THC caps, and requiring accurate labeling. They give labeling. They give two reasons. The cannabis industry should not have the social license to sell today's extremely potent THC edibles and extracts that it had to sell at much lower THC levels familiar to the public when pot legalized. And second, because unregulated labeling allows consumers to receive higher-than-intended THC doses. I ask for your awareness and to consider...
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning. Again, all remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
All right. We will now...the next item on our agenda will be the approval of the minutes...okay. A second. All right. I just want to make sure I say it because last time I was told I had to say it. So, next item on our agenda, minutes, statements proceedings for the regular meeting and flood control district meeting of July 19, 2023. There's a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. Supervisor Anderson?
Aye.
Supervisor Desmond?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Vargas?
Vargas, aye.
That motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present voting aye.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the formation of our consent calendar. Items one and three and flood control district item one. Members of the public will be able to comment on the consent calendar after the supervisors pull the items they would like to have for discussions. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion? Supervisor Anderson?
No, this time, can't.
All right. Supervisor Desmond?
No, no items to pull or anything. Comment, move to approve the consent calendar.
All right. Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer?
No.
No? Okay. And then I'm happy to make a second. So we have a motion and a second, and what we'll do is now we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have five total requests to speak on items on the consent calendar, two individuals in person, and three requesting to speak by phone. Again, for any of the members of the public that have requested to speak on items on the consent calendar, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers as your name is called. If you could please come forward and stand against the east wall and under the murals until it is your turn to speak. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals. AJ and Truth. Again, you'll have two minutes to address the board, and if you could please state...if you could please begin by stating your name for the record.
This is Truth, and I'm ready to kick some boring consent butt, Jim. Item one, High Ridge Road has been allowed to deteriorate to the point of poor condition, requiring road resurfacing. Why? This area would seem to qualify as under-invested or marginalized, so this is a crime of inequity. To fund the long overdue repairs, property owners within Permanent Road Division Number 1000 in Lakeside approved a three-year rate increase and a $100,000 loan from the county. The loan with 3.44% interest will be paid over five years with people paying tax roll payments of over $21,000 a year. It's one week to finish the job, but it's just sad that the county allowed the road to crumble to such a disrepaired condition to begin with. Item two, Plaster Trail and the crest of Hesha Granite Hills and Harbison Canyon areas will be vacated. The plaster trail cul-de-sac was originally planned to provide public access to 16 lots, but it's no longer needed. The applicant's $5,000 deposit will cover the cost. The sustainability statement says, quote, "The proposed action contributes to the county's sustainability goal number one: to engage the community to partner and participate in decisions that impact their lives and communities." As Don Henley said, "An opportunity to participate in the little game." But everyone's just a participant. Even those who think they're above meet their eventual end-of-use downfall, just like the fletch and the eke rat. So all may as well stand on their own two feet with their own ideas. Item three, some properties on Valley Center Road are being vacated to extend and maintain drainage facilities, excavation, and embankment slopes and cumbre portions of their property. The applicant's $4,500 deposit will cover the cost. Isn't that wonderful? And flood control item one is $1.5 million to fix a sinkhole and repair a parking lot on Briar Road in Bonita. Another old road damage the storm had nothing to do with. It's actually old. It's not new, you would think, but nope, they're just taking forever to fix it.
You may approach. Thank you. Chairwoman Vargas, supervisors, good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am AJ Toda. I'm the committee chair for PRD 101A, and appreciate that the county is willing to consider helping the community with this loan.
Three years ago, with the help of DPW, we were able to go out to the community, have various debates and meetings, informational meetings, and came to the conclusion that we need to step up and take our responsibility and our partnership with DPW to maintain High Ridge Road properly. Since then, we phased in the three-year increases to make it more acceptable and easy for our community to thrive at the right level, and we're looking forward to moving forward with High Ridge Road being a safe place. I wanted to add just to the great description that was already given to you, the additional benefits of this loan. This will save us about two to three years, what we would have to do otherwise in order before we could actually improve the road fully, saving us some maintenance costs during that time, of course, and making it much safer right away. Though we don't particularly like it, our road is often used by commuters twice a day, going from Highway 67 up to Eucalyptus Hills, back and forth. So for that purpose alone, it is a pretty high-use road, and so it's very meaningful for our community's safety that this be done soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we will hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'd like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we'll begin with our first caller.
Consuelo. I wanted to report, it was August 14th, at exactly 11:34, there was spraying being done prior to Hurricane Hillary. And it was from the county, and I asked the worker, "What is he spraying?" He said, "We're spraying Roundup." So, you know, I just needed to, I don't know who I needed to talk to because you guys obviously aren't going to change anything up. So I need to talk to somebody because I have solutions other than Roundup that the county could be spraying in my community. Again, this was prior to the hurricane, and I'm serious. I want a meeting with somebody to, you know, this is my community, and this is not...
Consuelo, what item were you speaking to, Consuelo?
On the item that I wish to, because this is my time. You're getting paid by my fucking...
All right. That's fine. That's fine. That's fine. I'm your supervisor. So what I'm going to ask is that you reach out to my office. As your supervisor, I will follow up, and we will have somebody from my office follow up with you so that they can get you the information that you need. Right now, we're on the specific...
And I have solutions, too. I'm not just pumping with the complaint or a problem. I have solutions, so this needs to be...
So feel free to...
...throughout the county. Okay? Sounds great.
Thank you. We'll go to our next...
That's it.
Do you have any more comments?
No.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Well, what I just heard is completely disturbing, and that would have gone with the flood control district item in Bonita for the storm drain repairs because it has to do with storm, right? The fact that you guys are spraying Roundup before a storm, I don't understand how that could...like, that's Agent Orange. Do you understand what that means? Like, who in their right mind would have anybody be spraying toxic chemicals that are deadly to human beings before a storm so that when the storm comes, it goes everywhere? I mean, and so Nora, I hope that you're not just, you know, blowing smoke up her butt just to shut her up, but that you actually would take into consideration the things that she's going to tell you that you guys can use instead of poisoning the community right before a storm. That is so negligent. And so I'm wondering as well, with this whole continued storm drain repair in Medida, and you're adding $500,000, are you going to add that to your emergency that just took place so that you can get to your threshold of the 14.6 or whatever million dollars that you need to get FEMA funds? I don't think you guys think about the things that you do that are completely terrifying, and people don't even understand that. Like, I had other stuff to say, but that is completely absurd to be doing this and not even think about it. Like, you guys sit up there on this pedestal like you are so holier-than-thou, and this kind of shit takes place, and we're poisoning the people, and that's just one level of it. One, not including the bioweapons that you guys are trying to force everybody to get. It's time that people wake up because you guys reap what you sow, and right now what you are sowing is not good because you are destroying people's lives, and you don't even care, and you think that we're crazy. We actually care...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Paula Boldt. Well, let's see. A sinkhole happened on June 12th. The cause was the collapsed two-foot, not inches, storm drain pipe. So the sewer people were in the process of taking videos, hopefully of damage, and planning the repair. How complicated can that be? Not like a two-foot drain pipe is something that's able to hide easily. So by June 26, this sinkhole had enlarged, causing the inevitable major property damage and a $1.5 million repair bill. And now, I guess with all the rain, probably also good mosquito breeding ground. In addition, the agenda says that the funding is available from the prior-year balance. If this is so, why are you requesting $500,000 more of our taxpayer dollars? The repairs are now estimated to be completed in November, which is a huge and ridiculous jump from the July meeting when the completion date was...
Paula Bold. Well, let's see. A sinkhole happened on June 12th. The cause was the collapsed two foot, not inches, storm drain pipe. So the sewer people were in the process of taking videos, hopefully of damage, and planning the repair. How complicated can that be? Not like a two-foot drain pipe is something that's able to hide easily. So by June 26, this sinkhole had enlarged, causing the inevitable major property damage and a $1.5 million repair bill. And now, I guess, with all the rain, probably also good mosquito breeding ground. In addition, the agenda says that the funding is available from the prior year balance. If this is so, why are you requesting $500,000 more of our taxpayer dollars? The repairs are now estimated to be completed in November, which is a huge and ridiculous jump from the July meeting, when the completion date was estimated in August. I think we need a new contractor. I don't know what is taking so long when you yourselves point out the obvious. Quote, "Failure to complete the required repairs in a timely manner will result in the continued expansion of the sinkhole, which would result in additional property damages and potential damages from floodwaters and public roadways and properties in the immediate vicinity," end quote. I would appreciate if you can let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on the items on the consent calendar this morning.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. Supervisor Anderson. Supervisor Desmond.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer.
Aye.
And Chairwoman Vargas.
Vargas, aye.
That motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present, voting aye.
All right. We now move to item number four, which is the discussion on Traffic Advisory Committee and related sequel exceptions to adopt the recommendations, including introducing an ordinance from September 13th and second reading of an ordinance unless ordinance is modified on second reading. Can we go ahead and call the speakers for the public, please?
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have five total requests to speak, two individuals in person, three requesting to speak by phone. Like to also note for the record, we did not receive any ecomments on this item. Again, for any members of the public that have requested to speak on this item by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now. We will begin with the in-person speakers. I'd like to invite forward Oliver Smith and Truth. You have two minutes to address the board, and if you could please begin by stating your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Oliver Smith. I'm from Valley Center, California. I was somewhat concerned when I read item four, Traffic Advisory Committee recommendations on reducing the speed limits in Valley Center, Coal Grade Road, Lilac, Old Castle. My first concern was, in each statement, it said that two planning group members were in attendance and expressed support for the reduced speed limit. For expressing support, what happened to the other 13 members of the planning group? Did the planning group vote? I know of no vote from the planning group that supported that. If they had voted on it, that's fine. I was a former, I was chair for 10 years of that planning group. If they had voted on it, terrific. We can move forward. So that's number one. Number two is, Valley Center only has a few major access routes. Valley Center Road, Lilac, Old Castle, Coal Grade Road. Slowing those down will impact the residents and the businesses within Valley Center, because they can't get in and out as effectively. And if it, I know that there have been efforts to slow down Old Castle Road. There is a section of it that is speed calmed, and that is by people who own homes along Valley Center, along Old Castle. They knew where they were buying their homes. Old Castle was there already. It's like buying a house near an airport. You should expect the issues. So I think the speed limits should be reduced based on the community input, and there's another road that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
This is Truth, and I got the answers. Every six weeks, the Traffic Advisory Committee meets to lower speed limits to edge closer to walking, competing with driving. And I thought when I first said that, it was a joke, that it was a cheap way to de-incentivize driving, but it turns out that I was dead on. That's exactly what's going on. As part of an over $22,000 cost, Lilac Road, Old Castle Road, and Coal Grade Road, all in Valley Center, are having the speed limit reduced from 55 to 45 miles per hour. It's exactly how I described yesterday about Assembly Bill 43 and 1938 being used to lower speed limits anywhere but up to 10 miles per hour without community input. It's going to pop up wherever possible, just like in San Francisco. This item says, quote, "Properly posted speed limits provide feedback to drivers to improve traffic safety and reduce the number and severity of collisions," end quote. That's not true, according to Vicente Romero of San Francisco's Municipal Transportation Agency, who said despite lowering speed limits, people were still driving the same speeds, and there were no decrease in fatalities. He even said that they were just hoping that their measures would improve things. This item's equity statement says, quote, "The transportation system must be safe for all road users, for all modes of transportation in all communities, understanding travel patterns where correctable crashes are occurring," end quote. It's a major agenda encompassing many different aspects. The roads are being transformed into being for walkers instead of for drivers, while still using the taxes that drivers pay. Then, when it says "in all communities," how can walking or biking be made safe in parts of the county where almost nobody walks or bikes? There's not even a way to measure safety. And for understanding travel patterns, that must involve tracking. Is that related to sandbags, microtransponders? And a correctable crash? I'm pretty sure once a car is totaled, it ain't coming back. I got a sign for the Traffic Advisory Committee. Stop. Stop lowering speed limits.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, when it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we'll begin with our first caller.
So great. It costs $22,040 just to lower the speed, because you guys, for staff time, materials, and supplies, I wonder what kind of supplies those are, and what staff time that is. I mean, is it typing up this whole, you know, thing? But it's so great, because it's like, you know, you guys are doing very well with the UN agenda, right? And so as long as you just keep reducing the speed, right, then nobody is going to get anywhere very fast, and it's going to be like, oh, man, I might as well walk, right? Because I mean, if the speed limit is like five miles an hour, I might as well get out of my car and walk, because otherwise, we're just going to be sitting in traffic the whole time. So, I mean, you guys are doing a very, very, very good job, you know, in lockstep with the people that are destroying our nation. And you know what? They love Roundup, too. It's so great. You guys are in lockstep there. Like, you are so smart to spray that before the storm. I mean, how much money did you guys get extra, right? I mean, we love money. I mean, that's why it's like, next time, if you guys would like me to do the work to just, you know, lower and lower the speed limit, I don't mind doing it. You know, I'll charge you like, listen, we'll do it for like $5,000, okay? So you're actually going to be saving your guys some money, and I could actually lower them even quicker if you would like. I mean, I think that 10 and five miles an hour isn't enough each time. What you should be doing is like 25 or something like that. I just don't feel like we're on target for our goals to live sustainably, right, with less GHGs and all that. Yeah, I don't know. And then maybe we could think about capturing carbon, like outside of the car, like when it's exhaust, like just have somebody put their mouth there and suck up and be the-
Thank you. Your time is up. And just to note for the record, that speaker was Audra. We'll go to our next caller.
Consuelo. That's a bargain. 5,000, girlfriend. Can I hire you? What I wanted to do was address the brother from Valley Center. You know, this is all a part of an agenda. Look up UN Agenda 2030. They want to reduce the speed. They want to detour the people from driving. Watch out for fires. You know, they'll be coming next, because they are trying to get everybody out of anywhere that's, you know, they don't have to abide by the bureaucracy. Anyways, what else was I going to say? Oh, and thank you. Thank you so much for, I know you had something to say, Audra, and thank you for, you know, just pointing out just how horrible the Roundup that they use in our county without no, and nobody knowing, you know? I was the big mouth who pulled over on the road to question the county worker and ask, "What are you using?" Anyways, yeah, if anything, please, people, do your due diligence and be the big mouth of our county as well, and speak up, because if we don't speak up, it's going to get worse. It's already getting worse. Anyways, that's it.
Thank you. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
And this item four, I just wanted to thank our DPW staff for all their hard work on this one. There's a lot of new homes and growing pains, and we were, I mean, my office, we're getting a lot of complaints about speeding, and I know that, you know, it comes with new people living in the area and how we have to kind of respect each other and learn to live together there. But Valley Center is in desperate need of traffic calming measures. Speed seems to be a persuasive or pervasive issue. I'm actually going to be meeting with the captain of the California Highway Patrol that handles the traffic enforcement there in Valley Center. And so today's action will help reduce the speed limits along many segments of the roadways in the area and Marley. Thank you very much. Grateful to see the county taking this step to improve traffic safety for the folks in Valley Center. So happy to support. Thank you.
Seeing no additional comments. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Supervisor Anderson. Supervisor Desmond.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer.
Aye.
And Chairwoman Vargas.
Vargas, yes.
That motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present, voting aye.
All right. We'll move on to discussion item number five. Notice public hearing, Campus Park West Development Project. Approve exchange of real property and related sequel addendum to a subsequent environmental impact report. Clerk, can you please call the speakers?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We have four total requests to speak, one individual in person, and three requesting to speak by phone. Also like to note for the record, we did not receive any ecomments on this item. For the members of the public that have requested to speak on this item by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions provided to you. And I'd like to invite forward Truth. You have two minutes to address the board.
It's Truth. The Campus Park West Development, owned by LVPSD LLC, is a 116-acre mixed-use master plan, 513,000-square-foot community with commercial space, industrial space, and 283 residential condos. It's gigantic, so I have a feeling it's not affordable. The project is located in Fallbrook, near State Route 76 and the 15 interchange. So it's right next to a highway, which Nora and Jim have said in the past, emits toxic greenhouse gas emissions. Although I'm sure they would say they didn't approve this project, so it's too late. But there have been other developments they did approve that were also right at the corner of two highways. Like I said before, it's very difficult to keep up with the ever-changing climate change cult. There are storm emergencies during a summer heat wave even. But it's good that there will be realignment of Pankey Road and Shearer Crossing to allow for car and pedestrian access with road winding and circulation for future retail and restaurants. But it's a very strange process that this developer can propose to exchange property with the county. The county will transfer ownership of a two-acre portion of property valued at $299,000 to the developer, and the developer's going to trade their 2.8 acres, valued at $639,000, to the county. So by financial value, the county's actually getting a good deal on this one. The developer is even going to pay all the staff costs to complete the transaction and any fees that may be required costing them about $6,000. So in total, the county's going to collect about $346,000 in value out of this deal. Almost makes me want to support it. I don't know. The only thing I found very strange, though, was that I could find no information about the developer, LVPSD LLC. I did find that they were created in 2016 and are based at 2020 L Street in Sacramento. But this developer doesn't even have a website. What's going on here? It's very strange. Well, there you go. That's the end of today, so I'll see you next week, Nora, as usual. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, when it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we'll begin with our first caller.
Oh, it's so funny. Property exchange. I just, the world we live in is quite hilarious, the way we have to do all these, like, if we want to do this, we need to do this and this. We can't just, like, exchange property. And I love how you're going to, you know, you're like, "We're going to take land that is, you know, valued at $639,000, and we're going to give you, in exchange, land that is a value of $299,000." And it's a good cha, you know, that's pretty, that's pretty good. I mean, I feel, obviously, you guys wouldn't do it if it was the other way around, right? If you were getting the lesser-valued land. I just find it interesting, because you guys just love doing all this stuff so that you can get your, you know, UN agenda plan intact. So, yeah, like I said before, you're just doing a really good job. But I mean, who knows? Is that, you know, developer from somewhere else? Because you know what they're trying to do up there, too, right? They bought just a bunch of land, and they're going to, oh, they're going to build one of those smart cities, right, like we're doing? It's so great. I wonder if they're the same people, and they're like, "We're going to get some, you know, land down here in San Diego and do the same thing. Let's give it to the county and then let them do what they want with it," right? Just because, you know, who cares if the people are going to put it, be put into these, you know, slave-chamber cities. It's good. Oh, man. How are you guys doing today? I just, it's good, yeah. Hopefully, this, you know, this is probably going to be a really good project, right? It's going to be so smart. People are so smart to get into it. And then how much are they going to have to charge to actually leave it? Who knows, right? But they'll probably get one or two passes, you know, a year, maybe. I don't know. And then maybe somebody, if they have money, they could pay somebody else for-
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Consuelo, want to make up for you speaking up, Audra.
Do you have any further comments?
Yeah, I'm commenting. This is my comment.
I like how you're going to, you know, you're like, "We're going to take land that is, you know, valued at $639,000, and we're going to give you, in exchange, land that is a value of $299,000." And it's a good cha, you know, that's pretty, that's pretty good. I mean, I feel, obviously, you guys would do it the other way around, right? If you were getting the lesser-valued land, it's funny, but interesting. You guys would love doing all this stuff so that you can get your, you know, UN agenda plan intact. So, yeah, like, it's just a really good job. But I mean, who knows? Is that, you know, developer from somewhere else? Because you know what they're trying to do up there, too, right? They bought just a bunch of land, and they're going to, oh, they're going to build one of those smart cities, right, like we're doing? It's so great. I wonder if they're the same people, and they're like, "We're going to get some, you know, land down here in San Diego and do the same thing. Let's get it to the county and then let them do what you want," like, right? Because, you know, who cares if it's the mortgage that they put into these, you know, slave-chamber cities. It's good. Oh, you know, how are you guys doing today? I just, it's good, yeah. That's what it is, you know? This is probably going to be a really good project, right? It's going to be so smart.
More construction.
More to get into it.
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
I'll second it. I have a comment.
All right.
Again, I want to thank DPW and Davia and her team for working with the developer to solve these property boundaries. I think it's important that we stay focused on the solutions, which is being done here. I'm excited to see this project move forward and have these smaller, I guess, land boundary issues resolved and moving forward. So thank you very much.
Okay. Any additional comments? All right, seeing none. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. Supervisor Anderson. Supervisor Desmond. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer.
Aye.
Chairwoman Vargas.
Vargas, aye.
That motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present, voting aye.
Thank you. We will now go to public comment. Clerk, can you please call the remainder of the public speakers? None agenda public comments, sorry.
Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. Thank you, Chairwoman Vargas. We still have five total requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, one individual in person and four requesting to speak by phone. Again, for those that have requested to speak via phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers and I'd like to invite forward Bryant Rumba. You have two minutes to address the board. Last call for Bryant Rumba. Not seeing Bryant in the chamber. We'll go ahead and go to the callers. We'll give them one second to call in. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, when it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. And again, I'd like to remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking and we'll begin with our first caller.
Yeah, you know, as I was saying earlier when, you know, I learned about the good old Agent Orange being sprayed, you guys will and are reaping what you sow. So everything that you do, you will be either rewarded for or punished for. And you guys sit here and you want to gaslight the public and be like, oh my gosh, they're so horrible, I can't believe, you know, they're saying these things. It's so funny because I was beaten up in the hallway and you guys sit here and you're like, people are so mean with their work. I can't believe it. Really? Well, I mean, you know, but you're content with having people beat up, um, by the sheriff and sticking them on them. And, you know, I, I noticed that Banano's a lot standing in front of the people trying to intimidate them, you know, and you guys didn't do that. And we, you know, are actually trying to save people's lives and you claim that you are, but everything that you're doing is totally like psychological warfare and, you know, destruction of the human, um, psyche and body. I mean, you want children to destroy themselves and mutilate their bodies, like cut off their penis and their boobs and all of these things. You want people to inject themselves with a bioweapon that has AI technology in it to become transhuman and, and kill people. Um, you want to give people sewer water and you don't care. You want to spray people with poisons and you don't care. You don't care that the things that are going on above us are being sprayed in nano, nanoparticulate size that are totally toxic to the human body. You don't care that, you know, um, parents are being seen as terrorists for just trying to protect their children. You don't care. And we care and we come in and we fight for everybody. And that's the thing that people have to realize that we are the plan. No other human being that's gonna do it. It's you.
Thank you. Your time is up. And Chairwoman Vargas, not seeing any other callers called in, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning.
Thank you. We thought the session is adjourned. Thank you very much. Feel better, Vice Chair.
The next regular meeting of the board will take place on September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.